The Huntsville City Council Meeting is now in session. If you have any electronic device that could disrupt this proceeding, please turn it off or put it in a silent mode. As always, thank you so kindly for your help. Also, will you stand if you choose for the invocation led by the Reverend Dale Clem and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Jenny Robinson?
Let us pray. Giver of life, we invite your continuing creative spirit to this place among these citizens gathered here and leaders so that we might seek the common good not only for this generation but for the seventh generation. Forgive us when we are shortsighted. Forgive us when we look at issues only from one position. Help us to recognize prejudices and limitations which dull our capacity for unity and vision for the future. Give us wisdom, oh God, to keep up with the rapidly changing culture. Help us to go out of the way to walk alongside and bring aid to those most vulnerable in our culture, in our city. Heal the divisions and help us be civil and respectful in our speech and conduct. These things we humbly pray. Amen.
Do you face the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you Reverend Clem and thank you Dr. Robinson. Council members, you have before you an electronic copy of the minutes from our regular meeting held February the 11th, 2016. Are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none, the minutes stand as recorded. We're now at Agenda Item Number Four, Resolutions and Special Recognitions. Mayor Battle, you have the floor, sir.
We have the microphone from the drawer. We're ready. I would like to ask Chief McMurray to come up. And Chief McMurray has some of his staff. If y'all would come too. Chiefs, we have some awards to be given tonight. Now, I'd like to pass it off to you and ask you to present these awards for us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Last year, the Howard Sanford presented a few of our officers, two of them actually, for a State Legislator Medal of Honor. And it's quite a distinction. Only one officer per year is recognized in the entire state of Alabama. These two Huntsville police officers, not these two next to me here, by the way. This is Deputy Chief, Chief Deputy Kirk Giles and Corey Harris. They're my two chief deputies here, deputy chiefs, both. And the two officers, I'd like for them to come on up here while I tell you a little bit about them. Reynard Robinson and Jason Moore. They were recognized with the Legislative Medal of Honor. Unfortunately, since they only gave one a year, they had to order a new one because they won a joint award this year. They were actually in a gunfight over here on Stanford which lasted for several hours. Officer Moore here is to my left and then Reynard. As they approached the house, Officer Moore was actually shot in the face by a shotgun which almost rendered him blind. He still has many pellets in his body today. They've removed many of them, but he still has more surgeries to go, believe it or not. It's hard to believe that he's that good-looking with all that lead in ya. But they did a real good job. While he was injured, he continued to fight through and exchanged gunfire to the point where he ran out of bullets with his rifle. Officer Robinson was taking position behind a tree and they kept the suspect pinned down to where we could finally get Officer Moore to the hospital for treatment. Additional officers came in and concluded the situation a couple hours into it. But Howard Sanford was very, he wanted to be here tonight, but he's still down at the state. It took a while to get the second medal in, so we have the medals now to present them. And we wanted their family here to be recognized and see them get these medals. One of them is for the uniform to wear and one of them is for presentation. And they cost several hundred dollars for these medals. Like I said, they're very important. It's very distinguished. And we're very proud to have these two officers with us because of their bravery and what they did on the street. To recognize these two officers, this is a 2015 Alabama Legislative Medal of Honor for Law Enforcement. It's a distinction for both courage and bravery in the line of fire. And there were many, many officers that did great deeds over the past year that were put in for this award. So I just want to say thank you very much. And Deputy Chief Giles, if you would. Mayor, this is what they look like. Jason Moore, it's my pleasure and my honor to give you this award tonight.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much to both of them.
If you would, just sit down and talk about what you're saying. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to our officers. Jason Moore looks much better tonight than the day I visited him in the hospital. He was, looked a little bit different at that time. So we're glad to see him well and out and around. Also tonight, Mr. President, we'd like to do a presentation. It's Harrison Diamond, Harrison. Harrison has been leading our effort to do work with Huntsville Utilities for bringing fiber to the home. And we have a group who is going to help us do that, who is Google. And Harrison has been kind of the lead from the city side on that. And we want to say that our partners at Huntsville Utilities have done great work with that. Y'all passed some legislation early that allowed them to actually get set up to do this. And this Monday, we made the announcement. And I'd like to turn it over to Harrison Diamond who can kind of explain what we've done with this, through this process.
Sure. I would say this is an update, but if you followed all the social media posts, I think the cat's kind of out of the bag on what all we were able to accomplish as a community. Before I kind of go into the details, I want to put this into perspective about why the Gig City initiative is so important. And open up with just some facts that I think are quite fascinating about the direction things are going. So only 12% of the Fortune 500 companies in 1955 are still on the list today. The large industrials have been replaced by a lot of knowledge-based companies. Two things, within the next couple of years, 50 billion connected devices will be in existence. There's only about 6 billion today. And also, the Internet of Things, which is basically machines talking to one another as well as automation, will displace about 5 million jobs globally. So what does that mean? That means communities that plan to be successful will need to understand this technology and be a real thought leader in this. You know, and it took 75 years for the telephone to reach 50 million users. And it took the app Angry Birds just 35 days. I wanted to think about that leap that it took. And also, related to our workforce, the office of today is anywhere. So all of these things are all related to the gig and how you can actually harness ultra-high-speed Internet. So why the Gig City? So Huntsville markets itself as a smart place, you know, a smart place to operate a business, a smart place to live. But if we are to be a smart place, we have to have that smart infrastructure, and that's what the gig allows. So we also have a need for an infrastructure standpoint to be more resilient and better connected so that we can respond to outages in a much quicker way. You know, the gig also allows us to maintain a strategic advantage in the global, you know, regional and, you know, national competition over top talent and leading companies. Companies and people that will come to work have come to expect that you will have highly reliable, highly affordable, and high-speed Internet. And more importantly, our current citizens and existing businesses have demanded this. So now I'd like to kind of tell you about how we got here. So, you know, fiber in Huntsville is really nothing new. We've been putting fiber in the ground for more than 16 years now. The utilities has been doing it. Water Pollution Control has been doing it. So really, you know, it's having the fiber, but really it's that spirit of using the gig to really change the community. So that all started in 2010. You might remember when Google announced that they are seeking to have Google Cities. And we did compete for that. Peyton McNolly, who spoke at our announcement earlier this week, led that effort along with some folks in our ITS department and a number of other community leaders. If you asked the question, were we ready? Probably not at that time. We also didn't want to change our name from Huntsville to Google City, and that probably was probably the real reason. But Kansas City did change their name to Google City, and eventually they got it. But it did get us thinking, and I think that was really very important. So in 2013, you know, discussions began to happen. Mayor Battle has a group of advisory councils, one of which was his economic development team. And they were talking about the need for high-speed Internet, you know, to be able to move data, to be able to have workers that can be home yet still be in the office because of telecommute, telecommuting. So, you know, the question is, what can the city do and what can the community do? So I started talking to the utilities about thinking about this concept. And until this time, they haven't really thought about it. But that all began to change. So in 2014, Mayor Battle announced at a State of the City address that we were seeking to become a Gig City. And a couple of months later, at the beginning of last year, we issued out our RFI. I thought the RFI process went very well. We got 13 different requests for information back from companies that had all sorts of different models. And it kind of brought, it kind of validated a lot of our thoughts that we could have a public-private partnership model that we think could work for Huntsville. Now, a lot of people wanted us to go after the Chattanooga model. You know, we didn't really think that's the public sector's place to be, the cable company. So we think we found the model that works for us. And then the result, because nobody likes to talk about plans, we do want to see results. So I'm proud to say that we are Gig City, USA now. So I'll talk a little bit about how our network will work. So Huntsville Utilities, which as I said, has been putting fiber in the ground for 16 years, will build a ring around the community. And so what this will allow a company to do is to lease dark fiber. And thank you for your efforts to pass legislation over the past couple of weeks. You set the ability to be able to build this infrastructure, but also to lease the dark fiber. So it's very important for this deal to work. So what's Google going to be bringing? So Google will be bringing its television service as well as its Internet service. It will also be the first company to enter into the lease arrangement that you allowed to happen by being able to set lease rates. So the coverage area will be within the city limits of Huntsville, within the Huntsville Utility Service area. And we can expect first customers to be served by mid-2017. And so really, I want to kind of put a holistic approach to it. What we have now is really a robust broadband ecosystem. You know, we have competition now, and we think when companies compete, the true winner is the consumer. And I want to thank you all for your support of this project. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, Harrison has done yeoman's work putting this together from the city side. And our team with Huntsville Utilities has done a great job also to make this become a reality. And we all owe a debt of gratitude to all of them. So thank you very much.
And thank you, Mayor Battle, for that wonderful report. And you and your administration has done an impeccable job with that. I'm excited about it myself. I'm still trying to wrap my brain around how quickly things are going to pop up now with no buffering and all of the other obstacles. So thanks again.
Two other things, Mr. President. Jeff Birdwell, if you'd stand. We have Chief Cobb here from Madison. He's the chief, Fire Chief in Madison. And Chief Cobb, welcome. Jeff Birdwell is on Item 15FF. The Emergency Management Board has selected him to be the next Emergency Management Manager, our director down there. And this is an item that's on there. Everybody has his resume in front of them tonight. So just wanted y'all to be able to see Jeff and see who he is. And he gets to stay all the way down to 15FF tonight. So congratulations, Jeff. Glad to have you on our team. And also, Brandy Quick is here. Brandy is the new Executive Director down at Dido Landing. And Brandy, congratulations. We're going to miss you at the VBC, but congratulations on a new venture and a new job. And we look forward to working with you too. So thank you for coming. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We're now at Agenda Item Four, B Adoption and Presentations. 4B1A is a resolution honoring Joe Rich on his achievements and chairmanship of the Tennessee Valley Authority Board of Directors, brought by Councilman Clean. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Clean, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It carries. Councilman Clean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have the microphone, please? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. It's a privilege for me to be able to present this to Mr. Rich. I think all of us in this room know Joe. Joe has done something that I just think is really outstanding as far as one of these achievements that we've had in our community. Joe has been re-elected as Chairman of the Tennessee Valley Authority Board of Directors. And he has done so many things in this community. He has volunteered numerous hundreds of hours toward our BRAC efforts. He's been involved very much with the Chamber of Commerce. He has been involved helping to make this community a better place in so many ways. And Joe, this is just a small token that the council, and as you saw, it was unanimous, Joe, and you know...
That's a shock.
We're shocked about that. But all kidding aside, you have done so much for this community, and I just think being re-elected as Chairman of the TVA Board of Directors, that just, that just kind of reinforces what we know about you. And thank you for everything you've done for the community, and I'll be glad to let you say a few words if you'd like.
This is the first 5-0 vote I've ever gotten. So I don't know exactly what to say. Thank you for taking the time to have me here. I do know that we all know what a role TVA plays. I've been told, Ms. Quick, that we need to work on some issues together. But thank you, and I very much appreciate it. And we look forward to helping build Huntsville, North Alabama, and the Tennessee Valley together. As you may know, we, a few months ago, about a year ago, we announced to Google over in Scottsboro, the Jackson County area, enormous event. And knowing what you did with Google Fiber last week or this week is equally important. So exciting times for all of us, and thank you for this recognition.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Clean, and congratulations again, Mr. Rich. We're now at Agenda Item 4B Adoption Only. 4B2 Adoption Only. 4B2A is a resolution congratulating Mountain Gap School on its 50th anniversary celebration to be held at Mountain Gap School on February the 28th, 2016, brought by Dr. Robinson. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second. Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. Russell. Discussion?
This will be the 50th anniversary celebrated on Saturday. Unfortunately, I have to go to Texas to take care of my mom this weekend, so I will be missing it. But it will be my honor to have that resolution read there honoring the great work that has been done by so many teachers, by administrators, and by the very involved parents at that school, and I wish them the best.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It carries. 4B2 is a resolution. 4B2B is a resolution congratulating Elder Oscar L. Montgomery, Sr., on his 39th pastoral anniversary to be held at Union Hill Primitive Baptist Church on February the 28th, 2016, brought by Dr. Showers. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It carries. Dr. Showers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow night, and this is supposed to be a surprise, don't guess it's a surprise now, but tomorrow night, on behalf of the mayor and the council, I will be presenting this resolution to Pastor Dr. Oscar L. Montgomery at that time.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Showers. 42B2C is a resolution congratulating Superintendent Anthony E. Wheeler on being installed as District Superintendent of the Legacy District with a celebration to be held at the Western Huntsville on February the 27th, 2016, brought by Dr. Showers. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Russell. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It carries. Dr. Showers.
The City Council and the mayor of the City of Huntsville, Alabama, are prized that Pastor Anthony E. Wheeler, founding and senior pastor of the Beacon Hill and Wishes Center in Madison, Alabama, will be installed as the District Superintendent of the Newly Farmed Legacy District of the Alabama First Jurisdiction Church of God in Christ during a star-studded banquet to be held at the Western Hotel, Bridge Street Town Center on February the 27th of this year. Again, on behalf of the mayor and the council members, I will be presenting this resolution at that time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Any other special recognition? We're now at announcements. Councilmembers, 15J and 15K have been deleted. We have two items for unanimous consent. 15E is an ordinance to declare certain property surplus to be donated to the Huntsville-Madison County Marina and Port Authority, Project Number 71-16 Bravo Romeo 01, brought by Engineering. We'll take that up at that particular item. 15 double C is an ordinance to declare a portion of the first floor of the Clinton Street parking garage surplus property and leasing it to Clinton Row Partners, LLC for the purpose of retail development, brought by administration. Likewise, we will take those up with unanimous consent at the appropriate time on the agenda. There's no business with outside legal representation. We're now at Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearings. 6A Public Hearings to be held. 6A1 is a public hearing on ordinance number 16-11, zoning newly annexed property lying east of US Highway 431 South and on the west side of Goose Ridge Drive as Residence 1A District. This is set for tonight at our regular council meeting. Discussion?
Ashley Nichols, Planning Division. This property is approximately 14.39 acres. It's located east of US Highway 431 South and on the west side of Goose Ridge Road. This is newly annexed property that was annexed back in December. This property owner would like to request a proposed rezoning of Residence 1A District, which is consistent with the remaining subdivision. This is currently a part of the existing Hampton Meadows at Hampton Cove subdivision, and this will be approximately a three-lot addition to an existing phase that is being developed.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed.
Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It carries. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. 6B Public Hearings to be set. 6B1 is a resolution declaring, 6B1 is a resolution to declare a public nuisance located at 3212 Yale Circle and to set a public hearing when objections will be heard. This will be set at our March 10th, 2016, regular council meeting.
Moved to set the hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Showers. Any discussion? Ms. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Collier, counsel. In my role as Community Development Director for the City of Huntsville, I declared 3212 Yale Circle Northwest a public nuisance on February 3rd, 2016, due to the current condition of the property. As you can see in the photos, the property sustained a fire that caused the structure to be damaged beyond feasible repair. I'm requesting that you set a public hearing on March 10th, 2016, so that all property owners, having any objections to the proposed removal of this public nuisance, can have an opportunity to be heard by the Huntsville City Council. This request is a requirement of State of Alabama Act 1320. We will notify all property owners of this public hearing by both regular and certified mail.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Any further discussion, council members?
Yes.
Dr. Showers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Jordan, the owner of this property, were they contacted?
They have been contacted, yes, sir.
They have been contacted? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It carries. 6B2 is a resolution setting a public hearing as required by Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended on a resolution authorizing the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds for Westlake Apartments. This will be set March 10th, 2015, at our regular council meeting. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It carries. We're now at Communications and Reports. 7A Communications from the public. As I call your name, if you will go to the microphone, you will have three minutes to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record. Richard Best.
I guess I'm supposed to be here. My name is Richard Best. I live at 1706 Ward Avenue in Huntsville. Primarily, I came to inquire about the Google and the stuff, but he has presented as much I think that he knows about it. The gentleman did. And I got all my answers on that one. But I have a few other things to ask. One is, do we have any resolution of the Gate 9 entryway? It's not good, and it's not going very well. I have heard some solutions, and one of them is to put it in a tram way similar to the, what Huntsville Hospital has, to keep the, have a place outside the arsenal to put your cars and then take the tram in. It's just an idea. It's just a thought and an idea. I'm putting it out so that you can think about it. Also, I, I'm going over my notes. A lot of, I'm looking at what Richard Kramer did and a lot of those ideas that he had, especially using the TVA easements for a place to put our things. It's an idea to work. These are ideas only. I just want you to be aware that I'm aware of a lot of different things that can be done. My next thought, has there any further business done? This was Ed Mitchell's idea about getting, I don't know how we're involved with the Huntsville Airport, but, and the, but using...
Mr. Best, your time is up, sir. Do you need another minute?
I just have a second or two.
Okay, another minute. Council members, is that okay? Thank you.
Thirdly, I hope you all realize the wonderful things that Tom Cunningham did on Jordan out there. That's going to be beautiful for, I personally said, hey, you did a good job type of thing. I just want to put out the things that I have noticed around. We've done a lot of things to our good, and some things take a long time. Enough said.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Best, sir. And we... Thank you, Mr. Best, sir, and we certainly appreciate your ideas and recommendations. We are blessed to have Mr. Rich with us this evening. So, Mr. Rich, if you don't object, sir, would you go to the microphone and perhaps address some of those solutions that Mr. Best has brought to our attention regarding Gate 9 entryway, maybe what the federal government is planning to do, if you want to include in that, any discussion about TVA easements? And we certainly appreciate what Mr. Mitchell has proposed for the airport.
Thank you for the warning. There has been a serious effort involving many governments, including those in the state of Alabama, North Alabama, the state of Alabama, South Central Tennessee, and it looks as if we're on a pathway to begin, very quickly, moving Gate 9 back about 3/4 of a mile, widen it so that it will open up some of the transportation routes. I know the city of Huntsville is also working on some things involving 565, so we believe the problem will be resolved by that. I'll now turn it over to John Hamilton, who also knows a lot about this project and maybe can fill in some of the gaps.
And works for the city?
Yes, it works for the city, but used to be the garrison at Redstone Arsenal. As it relates to the TVA easements, I'd have to say I'll defer on that one and see what you're talking about, because I don't know that one. But, John, help me out here a little bit about what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Mr. Hamilton?
So, the relocation of the gate structure on Rideout Road there on the arsenal, Gate 9, has been contemplated ever since the enhanced use lease, the Redstone Gateway Project was really first conceived and put into contract with the city and the arsenal and the private developer. So, it does move... It moves the gate structure south, between a quarter mile and a half mile. It also ensures that that entire segment of Rideout Road is the full six lanes wide. So, really what you achieve, it's the same number of lanes as the gate currently has, but it gives you so much more queuing space that you really should be able to fit even the peak traffic off of the interstate and onto Rideout Road and be able to cycle through the gate without backing up onto the ramps and things. So, hopefully, everyone who's working on that is a real coalition of both public and private partners that are coming together to make that work. Certainly hopeful that that would get started here within the next year and be able to alleviate the challenges that exist there. As Mr. Rich said, there's also other work that's going on between the city and the state, looking at some of the areas here on 565, is there additional exits that potentially could help with getting folks into Redstone Gateway, as well as maybe reconfiguring some portions of that interchange on 565? That would help with the research part of 565 interchange, so.
Thank you.
And I would be... It would be remiss not to mention, as you may recall, a couple of weeks ago, the porch band of Creek Indians out of Atmore, Alabama, donated a million dollars to this project, a little bit unique that they would be involved, but they're very much believe... They very much believe that North Alabama's got a lot of future for them, not in the casino world, but in jobs and other opportunities, so they have joined in to help make this road possible.
Thank you so kindly, Mr. Rich and Mr. Hamilton. Ms. Pam Mylin?
Yes, my name is Pam Mylin, and I'm the owner of Big Spring Cafe at 2906 Governor's Drive. For some of you that are not aware of it, Big Spring Cafe, according to the reports at the public library, has been in business in Huntsville, Alabama since 1922, was established first by a woman by the name of Stella Warner. That was unheard of back then. But it's been in my immediate family since 1947. My husband and I, Rusty, bought property at 3507 Governor's Drive eight years ago to build a new building. Kind of put it on the back burner, got a little worried about the economy, and so we decided that it was time to build or go home. So, with all our dedicated customers, we decided to strive for it. We have... We revised the plans, which that took a little while, because eight years, there had been, you know, the parking situation and the seating capacity had changed. So, the plans were updated and revised. We were told that we had to put in a deceleration lane, which that was okay, and that was fine. The permit from ALDOT for the deceleration lane alone was $23,000. They allowed us to do a bond, which we took the bond, which was great. Everything was ready. We did the bond. It was sent to the state of Alabama. It was a 27-foot deceleration lane. My husband and I went to get our loan through Independent Bank here in Huntsville. We are ready to go, and ALDOT has decided that they're going to shrink the deceleration lane from 27 feet to 16 feet and will not allow me to exit onto Governor's Drive. So, I'm asking the city of Huntsville for help in any way. West Huntsville, I was told, was going to be brought up and, you know, remodeled, and I definitely... I live in the county, but my business is in the city, and I am all for that area growing. I feel that from the interstate, when you exit onto Governor's Drive, if you're going to Huntsville Hospital, this area needs to be renovated. We need to do something. But, am I the only business from I-65 where you exit 65 to California Street that is going to have to not be able to exit onto Governor's Drive?
Mr. President?
Thank you. Ms. Mylin, are you finished, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Clean?
Ms. Mylin had talked with me before, and I guess you could say I've done a lot of great site inspections over there, eating her hamburgers over the years, and so I'm familiar with, you know, with her situation, her construction plans that she's been talking about. And she didn't mention it, but I believe that Big Spring Cafe is the longest continuous-serving restaurant in the city of Huntsville. So, you are, you know, historically significant and special. And of course, I think we've been talking about some great things that are starting to take place along Governor's Drive out west, the old Stone Middle School development that's taking place, and the fact Ms. Mylin's talking about investing into a new building, which would certainly be a good shot in the arm. She does understand, I did explain to her that, you know, we are separate from the Alabama Department of Transportation.
Yes.
But we have people that have close contact with ALDOT, and it appears on the... It looks like that she had things worked out, she had a commitment, and then it looks like ALDOT kind of changed on that commitment. And God, doesn't that sound familiar to what we've heard around in this room in the past? But I wanted to see if maybe Shane Davis could get with her, because I know he has good lines of communication. Shane, possibly, I don't know if there's anything you can address right now, but it looks like here she is putting all this money to building a new building, construction, which is a shot in the arm for that part of the city, and then where she's being treated and perhaps penalized compared to older businesses that are kind of being grandfathered in. And, you know, it seems like maybe there's some issues that could be worked out, you know, with Tuscaloosa Montgomery on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Clean. I believe they're going to discuss that privately, and thank you, Ms. Mylin.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just to keep up on this, I will be doing field research, eating every hamburger I can find at her place, and I'll report to you the findings.
Thank you, Councilman Clean. For some reason, we don't find that difficult to believe.
In the line of duty.
Ms. Jackie Reed?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess I want to thank you for laying public input, which is great. And the first thing I want to talk about is the Big Spring Cafe. As much as I see, as many years that I've been coming down here, and I see you help all the big developers, I'm hoping and praying that you get with the state and help Pam work that out over there, because you do everything you can for the big developers. These small businesses need help, so I know you're going to help her to get that worked out. You don't want much me down here on it, because I eat there three times a day, almost. Anyway, I got quite a few issues tonight. The railroad over here on Holmes Avenue, the track is bump, bump, bump. I want to thank Mr. Joe Rich for being nominated again. I think he's doing a great job. I think it's good. Sciquest, I'm ashamed of every one of you, and I was told Huntsville, Madison City Council was the same thing. Sciquest is out of business, and you wouldn't give them any money because they transferred and moved in Madison. That's a shame. That was one of the best educational projects we had going in this city. Why you didn't want to give anybody any money? I still don't understand why you did that. Of course, I sit up there and see if you give a lot of people money that you shouldn't. That's just my opinion, but anyway, I'm sad that Sciquest is out of business. I've got three big issues tonight, and it's all about downtown. I went to a planning department meeting the other night. I was shocked that we got partners trying to turn a city parking garage into a retail. Retail, the city parking garage on Clinton and Jefferson down here. It's on... Three items is on this agenda tonight. But the other night, the planning department brought it up when I questioned the partners, it was to lease it for 40 years. 40 years? They want to take the bottom floor of the parking garage downtown on Jefferson Street, the way I understand it, maybe you know different from me, and you want to turn it into retail. It's on the agenda here. Now you're going to declare the property surplus and lease it to somebody. I guess it's still for 40 years. The lawyers have called me downtown. There's no place to park when you go in the courthouse. People tell me all the time, they use that for parking. It's the closest downtown. The bank building over here's got many businesses in it, and they use that, and they were promised part of that parking garage. So, why would you take a city parking garage owned by the people? Not by you all, you're just elected officials. But by the people that's paid for that, and you turn it into retail? And I understand it's for $14,000 a year.
Ms. Reed, I'm sorry, your time is up. Would you like another minute?
Yes, I maybe need more.
Council members? Thank you.
But anyway, I'm against this. I think it's wrong. You are giving the city away. Quit it. Why... There's a lot of empty buildings downtown. Send them across the street. Send them somewhere else. We need that parking garage downtown. Why you keep giving the city away? And I heard the deal was made from the administrative office upstairs. Planning department said they didn't have nothing to do with it. It came from upstairs. When do you make these deals, is what I'd like to know? It comes in here, nobody don't know anything about it. Sweet deals are going on. It bothers me. I'd like to know more about government, because I don't see how this works. You make your deals upstairs with whoever, and you send them downstairs, and they okay them, and then you throw them out here. I'm against this parking garage turned into a retail. There's going to be plenty of retail, hotel, mortel, right over here where the Holiday Inn is, if you ever get that fixed. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. And if it's okay with you, ma'am, we'll hold those items 15(c)(C), 15d, and 15e when we get to that point and discuss it at that time. Mr. Gregory Antoine?
Thank you, council. My name is Gregory Javier Awal, as I go by. I live at 2721 Thornton Circle. Today, I was just walking around, and a truck pulled up next to the house that I lived next to, and I asked them what they were doing. They said, well, we're going to bulldoze the house down. And I was wondering, is the person or the builder supposed to give you any kind of warning? Or do they have to have a permit for demolish the house? And I have two concerns. And I just want to know what's going on about that, because you know how these contractors are coming in to that part of the medical district, Mayfair, Thornton Acres, tearing these houses down, not letting nobody know. And, you know, a lot of these houses that are there are made in the... Were built in the '40s. They've got asbestos shingles on it. It's a concern when you've got kids next door to the houses that's been tore down, that dust off of these asbestos shingles are going to float through the air. And that's a concern I've got, because we've had four or five houses, well, two houses on my street that were demolished, and we didn't know they were being demolished. Next thing we know, bulldozers out there tearing them down. We don't get no letter or nothing like, something like that. And my second concern is, on the corner of Thornton, Pansy Street, and Thornton Circle, there was a leak one month ago, right there at a fire hydrant. I called the utilities. They came out there and worked on it, and the water was going into the, I guess it was a storm drain. It wasn't going to the sewer, it was going in the storm drain. They fixed that, and two days later, it's leaked. It's been leaking, and it's been leaking for a whole month. So, that is just fresh water going down in that storm's drain. And that's all I got to say for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Yes, Councilman Clean?
I think, is anybody from inspection or Danny Shay here from Natural Resources who could address that? Because that is an older neighborhood, and there is a pretty bad issue concerning the potential as far as shingles and asbestos.
And the question, just to refresh on your recollection, is the builder supposed to give warning or have a permit to demolish the house?
Yes, sir. They do not have to give notification to demolish a house. They only have to give notification if there's going to be a variance that's going to be required to put a house back. They do have to have a permit, and in most cases, if it's a residence that's going to be removed and a residence put back in its place, Natural Resources doesn't even typically get involved.
Thank you.
There... I guess the concern I have, because we've had it in the past in the Mayfair neighborhood, and I think Danny, I guess, probably can, you know, verify that we've had had issues with asbestos and shingles and other things, you know, happening in the past. And what protection is there for adjacent property owners, neighbors?
Well, I would let Danny talk to that aspect of it. Thank you.
Danny Shay with Natural Resources. The requirements for asbestos under federal law don't apply to single-family residential, but there are general air pollution control requirements regarding dust suppression that we can enforce under any circumstance. So, if there's... Although they don't have to go through the same process as if it's institutional or industrial or commercial building, if there is a dust problem during demolition, people should contact our office, and an inspector will go out and require dust suppression.
Could you get with this gentleman, maybe explain all that or give him some contact? Because I know on Pansy Street and I believe over in Overton in that same neighborhood, we've had things in the past related to that.
And although it doesn't apply to single-family residential, probably the circumstance you're recalling, Mr. Clean, it actually was a couple of duplexes that were jointly owned, and if it's four or more units, it does become subject to all of the federal requirements.
There has kind of been a problem in the past with all of a sudden demolition taking place on weekends when people aren't aware of it, and we don't... And they don't really have a way to reach, you know, the appropriate department. So, I thought if you two could just make contact, I think that could be helpful.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Shay. Thank you, Mr. Clean. The second part of...
The second part of his inquiry was Thornton, Pansy, and Thornton Circle leak at the fire hydrant. Anyone from the chief's? If you want to just maybe check that and get back with us. He said it was fixed, and then it started leaking a few days later and has been leaking now for approximately two months, I believe.
And we've been doing quite a bit of work in that part of town, so I'll make sure we have a crew go and take a look at that. Thank you for letting us know about it.
And thank you, Mr. Gertis. Council members, we have a work session scheduled for March 3rd. We'll have several items that will be discussed, among them, traffic flow, interalia, some of the other items. And, Mr. Russell, we have a request from you, council members. If there's anything else that you'd like to add to the work session for March 3rd, 2016, beginning at 5:00, please let us know. There aren't any Huntsville utility items. We are now at agenda item number nine, board appointments. 9A is board appointments to be voted on. 9A1 is a resolution appointing Emily Donaldson to the Educational Building Authority of the City of Huntsville, West Minister, for a term to expire November 9th, 2021. Nominated February 11th, 2016, at our regular council meeting. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. Russell. Discussion, ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Council members, are there any other board appointment nominations? Council members, are there any other board appointment nominations? We're now at agenda item number ten, approval of expenditures. Ten A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Finance committee, Dr. Showers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I move that we would expand ten million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers for expenditures, ten million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Second by Councilman Kling. Um, discussion ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Any finance committee report, Dr. Showers?
Not tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. We're now at agenda item number eleven, communications from the mayor. Mayor Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to, uh, for the record, I'd like to make the following appointments. Martin Sisson to the Board of Zoning Adjustment for a three-year term to expire March ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Aladdin Bashir to the Human Relations Commission for a three-year term to expire March ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Um, as most people know, this is, um, and I, and I know that the council gets a lot of good comments too. This is pothole season. Uh, right after winter starts and rains come, and they get down in the cracks, and we have our freezing time, we have potholes. And we are filling about fifteen hundred potholes a week right now. Uh, kind of like measles coming out. And every year it comes out the same way. We have potholes come up, we go and fill them, and then we do repaving in the summer uh, when the weather gets, gets good. And I think we've just got a repaving list that is just about to be released in the next couple of weeks. So, um, if everybody would, please use your Huntsville Connects. Uh, Huntsville Connects is a very good, good tool to use. You can put it on your iPhones. If you see a pothole and you think it needs to be filled, take a picture of it. It will give us a GPS location and send the work order right into our public works. And they'll come out and they will fill your pothole and, and fix it. Uh, it is that season, and you know, that's one reason that we put together this kind of a, a system so that everybody can help make sure that we're aware, where, where, where there are some potholes out there. So we're going to keep filling them up. Um, I want to thank the council for their help with, uh, the Google Fiber effort that, uh, just, that we just got finished with. Uh, without your help, as we worked through this, we never would have had the precursors in place so that we could go ahead and do this and, and put this together. And, um, uh, you, you have been, uh, great partners in, in making this happen. I think the end result is that you've made our city a little bit better. Um, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We're now at agenda item number twelve, communications from council members. Dr. Showers, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, want to remind the public that uses Meridian Street, uh, going north or south on the twenty-ninth, we will be putting in, uh, some infrastructure items there. Really are called handicap ramps. And we would just encourage you to be patient, be careful uh, as you go through that particular stretch on Meridian Street. Uh, they'll be out there from eight-thirty to around two-thirty until they finish, uh, this particular project. Uh, there will be a community block party tomorrow, tomorrow night at Union Hill. Uh, March the eighth, uh, mark your calendars. There will be another Johnson High School concerned citizens. Uh, the big picture, uh, this is a workshop that give the citizens who live in and around Johnson High School an opportunity to submit their concerns about what they would like to see when the building is vacated. Uh, we will have the same thing, uh, at Barack, but we'll give you another date, uh, for that. I attended Oakwood University. Uh, we had one of our congress persons in town, uh, Sheila Jackson Lee was here. She was honored by a, uh, Oakwood University on their Black History, uh, program. Uh, last Saturday, I attended the annual ADC breakfast. Uh, that is a breakfast where all the politicians that are running for office, whether in March or in, uh, August, have a chance to be recognized or to make comments at that meeting. Uh, also, I attended the annual debutante ball. Uh, was at the BBC. Uh, we had a tremendous, uh, show of young ladies being presented on that particular night. Uh, the last thing I want to report is that I attended, uh, sponsored by, uh, the leadership Alabama Huntsville, Madison County. Uh, they had a, uh, sort of town meeting on the status, the state of the two-year colleges, uh, in Alabama. That was held at Dynetics. And of course, uh, it was designed for people that were concerned about the two-year colleges in Alabama to have a chance to make comments, ask questions. Uh, the panel was very unique. Uh, most of us know that across the state of Alabama, they're looking at merging, uh, our two-year universities, two-year colleges, community colleges. And of course, in our city, we are tremendously in need of our two-year schools here. Drake, uh, Community College in Calhoun, uh, to continue to produce the kind of workers that we're going to be looking for. And those are, uh, workers that, uh, background in workforce development. And of course, uh, I spent the whole time there that morning. Very informative in terms of the state of two-year universities, colleges in, in Alabama. That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Mr. Russell?
I'll waive my time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Dr. Robinson?
Uh, last week, the mayor and Mr. Hamilton, Dr. Showers, and Mr. Culver and I had the opportunity to address the mayor's leadership class. And I just, I commend the mayor for putting together that training program for our staff. It's a wonderful opportunity for them to get to know each other, to get to know the city, and to work more effectively, more collaboratively with each other. It was, uh, it, it's really an impressive training opportunity. And I think it speaks well of our city and the leadership that we are trying to develop here. I also had the opportunity to attend the Chaffee Neighborhood Civic Association meeting this past week. Colonel Bill Marks spoke. I think it's probably the fifth time I've heard Colonel Marks do that presentation. But every time I learn something, and I came away this time again impressed that, uh, the arsenal has a two-point-nine billion-dollar impact on our economy every year. That's, that's incredible when you think about that. I've also been spending some time at Grissom. I had the opportunity, Commissioner Riddick and I both had the opportunity on Monday to spend time with Becky Ballantyne, the principal, to learn about the great things that Grissom is accomplishing. They have three presidential scholars this year. We also got to attend the unveiling of their, uh, their robot for their robotics competition. But only half of the robotics team was there because the, because they were at the Cyber Patriot competition as well. There are so many wonderful things going on at Grissom. I think we are going to see some really terrific things coming from there. Um, also want to recognize Brandy Quick, uh, the new executive director at Ditto. Um, we've had some conversations already about some really great things that are going to be happening there. And there will be a press conference next week on March second at two PM where we'll get to hear a little bit more about that. And I wish her the, the best. We've been talking about how she's getting into the swim of things, getting her feet wet and keeping her nose above water. So we wish her the best in all of that. And then finally, I have the second edition of my District Three newsletter coming out tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Councilman Kling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, a couple of neighborhood concerns that I just want to kind of relay on and, and have looked into. Um, the McThormore Acres neighborhood has certainly been very active, and, uh, they are really getting involved in things. And, uh, council members will remember the discussion that we had during the, um, last meeting about their process on getting a petition for National Registry of Historic Places inclusion. And they are moving ahead with that. They got a great neighborhood association, good turnout at their meetings. And one of the things that had come out, and I know with Lynn Majors leaving, I'm not sure exactly where it needs to go, but they have identified, uh, uh, about eight or nine areas in the neighborhood that are kind of dark, that they would like to have, uh, streetlights added to, uh, for crime prevention purposes. And, uh, some of those areas I've seen that they do get dark at night, and, uh, it would be a good investment if we could get, Shane could get the appropriate person to look into that. Also similarly, there's been a request, uh, for another dark corner. Uh, and some of these dark corners may or may not be, um, outside of the normal criteria. But still, if they're dark, they're dark at night, uh, they need to be looked at. But, uh, we had a request for, um, a single street light to be installed at the corner of Hastings at Tremont, and wanted to ask if that could be looked into. Uh, wanted to pass on a real good comment I received, uh, from, uh, one of the officers of the Fleming Westbury Civic Association. They had contacted, uh, us concerning a request for street sweeping, and that request was relayed to, uh, Chris McNeese and Public Works. And they were out there very quickly, uh, covering that whole area that they had requested. And, um, the folks wanted me to, uh, pass on to, uh, Public Works that they appreciated great job they did and how quick that they were able to do it. Uh, again, that's all I have, Mr. President. And, uh, I guess we're kind of getting the home stretch, and, uh, pretty soon we'll be looking at springtime coming. And, um, I know we're going to have a great, uh, great spring season.
Thank you, Councilman Kling. Um, did have a student from Calhoun who was here to witness the council. Are you still here? Uh, just want her teachers to know that she did show up and, uh, was present. So also, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Mr. Chip Cherry, uh, our CEO of the Madison County Chamber. Uh, congratulate you, Mr. Cherry, on a very impeccable meeting, uh, lunchtime. I know I missed the breakfast meeting, but I'm happy with what is going on with the chamber. We're still staying afloat and doing exceedingly well. Thank you, sir. Council members, there's no unfinished business items for action. We are now at agenda item number fourteen, new business items for introduction. Fourteen A is introduction of an ordinance to establish the position of Director of Communications brought by administration. Fourteen B is an introduction of an ordinance, amending ordinance number eighty-nine dash seventy-nine as amended classification and salary plan brought by administration. Fourteen C is introduction of an ordinance to amend the budget ordinance number fifteen dash six forty-two to modify the authorized strength of the department brought by administration. We will take these items up, items up at our March tenth, two thousand and sixteen meeting. We're now at agenda item number fifteen, new business items for consideration or action. The chair wishes to hold fifteen E and fifteen double C. Any items you wish to hold?
Mr. Chairman, I wish to hold fifteen double D, fifteen double E, and fifteen double F.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hold item C.
Sorry, which one's that?
Fifteen C. So council members, thus far, we have fifteen C, fifteen E, fifteen double C, fifteen double D, fifteen double E, fifteen double F. Any other items that you'd like to hold?
Uh, go over those doubles again.
Yes, sir, Dr. Showers. The items to be held, fifteen double C, fifteen double D, fifteen double E, and fifteen double F. Any additional items, council members? Fifteen A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Rocket City Chain Game brought by Parks and Recreation. Fifteen B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Volkert Inc. for engineering design services for Pulaski Pipe pedestrian access improvement. Project number seven-one dash sixteen, Sierra Whiskey Zero Five brought by engineering. Fifteen D is a request for approval to advertise and fill the position of Civil Engineer III, pay grade nineteen, and to fill at steps higher than minimum within the pay grade if necessary, brought by engineering. Fifteen F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Forsite Inc. for engineering services for Holmes Avenue Corridor Study for Pedestrian Improvements, project number seventy-one dash sixteen, Sierra Papa Twenty-four brought by engineering. Fifteen G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Slade LLC for construction materials testing services for wind drive relocation, project number seventy-one dash fourteen, Romeo Delta Zero Two brought by engineering. Fifteen H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garver Inc., Garver LLC for engineering construction administration services for twenty-sixteen water pollution control sanitary sewer rehabilitation contract, project number seventy-one dash sixteen, Sierra Papa Twenty-three brought by water pollution. Fifteen I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to grant approval of an encroachment stipulation letter between Southern Natural Gas Company LLC and the City of Huntsville brought by water pollution. Fifteen K is a resolution, I'm sorry, fifteen I. Fifteen L, J and K has been deleted. Fifteen L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville, Community Action Partnership of Huntsville, Madison, and Limestone Counties as adopted by Resolution fifteen dash nine thirty-eight on December the third, two thousand and fifteen, brought by Community Development. Fifteen M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Community Action Partnership of Huntsville, Madison, and Limestone Counties for services to the homeless population brought by Community Development. Fifteen N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Crisis Service Center for Services to the Homeless Population brought by Community Development. Fifteen O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the City of Huntsville, Family Service Center Inc. for Services to the Homeless Population brought by Community Development. Fifteen P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the City of Huntsville, North Alabama Coalition for the Homeless Inc. for Services to the Homeless Population brought by Community Development. Fifteen Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and New Futures Inc. for Services to the Homeless Population brought by Community Development. Fifteen R is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Row Rose Home for Children for Services to the Homeless Population brought by Community Development. Fifteen S is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute supplementary agreement number one to the contract between the State of Alabama and the City of Huntsville for the widening and realignment of Church Street Phase One from Monroe Street to east of Pratt Avenue, and the realignment of Pratt Avenue, including bridge replacement at Ping Hook Creek, bin number zero-zero-eight-four-thirty-nine in the City of Huntsville brought by planning. Fifteen T is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number fifteen dash six forty-two by changing authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds brought by finance. Fifteen U is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations brought by finance. Fifteen V is a resolution approving travel, travel expenditures brought by finance. Fifteen W is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement with the low bidder as outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance brought by finance. Fifteen X is a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to invoke Regions Bank Sidewalk Letter of Credit Number five-five-one-zero-six-zero-two-five for Cedar Park at Belgrove Subdivision brought by the city attorney. Fifteen Y is a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit a physical year twenty-fifteen application to the Alabama Historical Commission on behalf of the Huntsville Historic Preservation Commission for a grant awarded in the amount of fourteen thousand for a complete professional survey of the McThormore Acres neighborhood necessary to determine eligibility for the National Registry of Historic Places brought by inspections. Fifteen Z is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an cooperative agreement between the City of Huntsville Doing Business Ads Huntsville, Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for State Homeland Security Grant, five F I L, Emergency Man, brought by Emergency Management. Fifteen double A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an cooperative agreement between the City of Huntsville Doing Business Ads Huntsville, Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for Homeland Security Grant, I C L, brought by Emergency Management. Fifteen double B is a resolution granting a business license for Razor LLC to operate a transportation network company in the City of Huntsville brought by public transit.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moving for consolidation approval of fifteen A through B, fifteen D, fifteen F through I, fifteen L through double B.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Russell for consolidation and approval of fifteen A through B, D, F through I, L through double B. Second by Councilman Kling. Discussion ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen C, as in Charlie, is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number two to the agreement between the City of Huntsville, Christopher Contractors, Inc. for periodic bid for sanitary sewer project twenty-fourteen, project number sixty-five dash fourteen, Sierra Sierra Zero Four brought by engineering, is their motion.
Over to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers. Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion, Ms. Martin.
Yes, sir. This is a contract.
This is a contract modification. It's an annual renewal between the city and Christopher Contractors for our periodic bid on sewer projects for this year, and so it's just to extend it for an additional year on call as needed basis.
Any further discussion, council members?
The amount is six million, six million two hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred thirty-three.
Yes, ma'am. It is a periodic bid and we do it for a three-year period, but we come back every year and renew it for that amount.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Council members, 15E requires unanimous consent. 15E is an ordinance to declare certain property surplus and to be donated to the Huntsville, Madison County Marina and Port Authority, project number 71-16 Bravo Romeo Zero One brought by engineering. Mr. Russell, how do you vote?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, we don't have a motion on the floor, but second of all, is it unanimous consent to vote on the item tonight or does it require unanimous consent at the council to approve at 5:00?
It requires unanimous consent because it's an ordinance. It requires unanimous consent to vote to approve this particular item.
Okay, I move to consider 15E by unanimous consent tonight.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to consider unanimous consent for 15E. Further discussion? Mr. Russell, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kling, Dr. Showers? The chair votes aye, it passes.
Move to approve.
Motion has been made second by the chair to approve 15E, ordinance to declare certain property surplus and to be donated to the Huntsville, Madison County Marina and Port Authority, project number 71-16 Bravo Romeo Zero One brought by engineering. Mr. Russell, how do you vote?
First of all, I think we should have discussion and then the vote doesn't require unanimous consent. You just told me it didn't require unanimous consent.
That is correct. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Russell. Discussion.
Ms. Martin, could you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. This is the existing trust bridge down there at Ditto Landing. The city of Huntsville had it closed since 2012 due to substantial improvements that were necessary for vehicular traffic today. This ordinance is declaring its surplus to the city and donating it to Ditto Board so they can use it as a pedestrian bridge since they own both sides of the property.
Will there be any liability on the city of Huntsville for doing this?
No, sir. We've written the agreement to where we are giving it to them as a private property now.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, council members? Dr. Robinson?
I believe the concern is that it's not suitable for vehicular traffic, but it is perfectly acceptable for pedestrian traffic. And I think the idea is that there is going to be a parking lot on the other side where people can park, can then walk over the bridge to attend concerts at the pavilion or other events that go on there at the marina. So it expands the access to the Ditto Landing and to the events and programming that are going to be expanded and will be taking place there. It's also a historical structure and it will be a good use for that structure that now is really just being wasted.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. 15-C is an ordinance to declare a portion of the first floor of the Clinton Street Parking Garage surplus property and leasing it to Clinton Row Partners LLC for the purpose of retail development. The chair moves for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mr. Russell, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kling? Dr. Showers?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The ayes have it, it carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the main motion, CC.
The motion has been made to approve 15-C on ordinance to declare a portion of the first floor of the Clinton Street Parking Garage surplus property and leasing it to Clinton Row Partners LLC for the purpose of retail development. Discussion, Mr. Hamilton.
Ms. Brit.
Yes, sir.
Could I ask, John, when you do your presentation, can you kind of clarify how much of this property is actually going to be utilized? There's misconceptions that the entire parking garage is going to be taken off of the rolls and it's not going to be used for parking, but I think that'd be a very good thing just to clarify.
Yes, Mr. Kling, the presentation that I'll go through addresses that specifically. So, Mr. President, members of council, the presentation that we'll go through is intended to give you a full overview of the entire project and there's actually three items. You've begun the process by addressing 15-C, but also Double D and Double E are the related items, unless this presentation is intended to cover discussion for all three of those items as you address them in sequence.
Mr. President, do you want us to ask questions and interrupt? Mr. Hamilton, do you want us to wait till he's through to ask questions?
Do you want asking questions during your presentation throw you off, sir?
It won't. I think it's most efficient really to address it as we go through the specific things and if there's something that's addressed in a subsequent slide, I'll point that out and recommend that we get to it.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Members of council, what we're talking about tonight is a recommendation for private development to occur on property that is ground leased by the city to that private developer here in the downtown area. You see the logo there, that is the logo from that development, the garages at Clinton Row. So first, some background. The Clinton Avenue Garage, and there's some maps that we'll get to that gets at the specific location, but the Clinton Avenue Garage has been as part of the city's inventory for a number of years. Actually going back prior to Mayor Mattel's administration, the city had contemplated turning the first floor of that garage into retail space. In fact, the city commissioned an architect to develop that concept. It was developed, there was some discussion about it, and it was really just kind of put on the shelf. And there has been at different times off and on over the subsequent years, some discussion about doing it. In 2015, we actually had investors, the Clinton Row Partners, led by Wesley Cronkleton, has been the primary point of contact with the city and then representing the partners who approached the city with unsolicited proposal to pursue that development, though doing it on a smaller scale than what was originally envisioned in that concept that I discussed from prior years. We think this project is valuable to that part of the city. We know that retail functions best when there's multiple establishments together. That's why malls came into existence. That's why you see strip centers with multiple storefronts and things. You know, one store by themselves tend to struggle as compared to those that might be consolidated in one area that are easily accessible by walking or driving. And so that's exactly what this does. And as we go through the map, I'll point out some places where there's been other developments that have occurred and this really just contributes to creating really a retail shopping district on one particular block in the downtown area. So this map is of this block on Clinton, so you have Clinton Avenue here in the downtown area, Jefferson Street that comes into the Courthouse Square. The Courthouse Square is right off of the map for point of reference and Washington Street there to the east. This is Garage O, also known as the Clinton Avenue Garage. Directly across the street is Mr. Johnson's storage units that you know about, I guess about two years or so ago, some of the ground floor storage units were turned into very small incubator-style boutique retail known as the shops at Clinton Row. UG White is a store that came in not too long ago and if you think in terms of context of a retail area, almost like an outdoor mall, that would serve essentially as your anchor, as your department store. And then on Washington, you have a number of other establishments, mostly eateries, food and beverage type establishments. So in the bottom floor of the garage, in the front portion is the area that you'll see and you'll see a more detailed breakdown, specifically the area that we've contemplated for ground lease, but would provide the retail frontage on the opposite side of the street so that you would have retail on both sides is why investors and developers believe this particular area is right for this type of development. And this gives you a picture view of a bird's eye view. This is that block on Clinton that we're talking about and this really becomes what we are trying to brand as the Clinton Row District. And this is a street level view. This is the garage in question. You see that the sidewalk actually is underneath the second floor of the garage, that second floor cantilever's out over it and it's actually just behind this wall where you'll see the development occur. That wall there is mostly chain link fence and that's where the front of the storefronts would be. And again, you'll see some more depictions as we go through this where you can see it even better. So what the development will do, again known as the garage at Clinton Row, is propose retail development five to six bays depending on the configuration that tenants may want from 1,000 to about 2,500 square feet each. You know, that's relatively small and that's on purpose. This is intended really to facilitate more investment on a small business scale, so you could potentially see some of those incubator-type retailers come out of the shops at Clinton Row as they grow their business and move to up to this scale and maybe someday they move up to even larger scale. You could see other folks that may want to start a business to go into one of these kind of spaces. So it's intended to be small in terms of small spaces. It's tend to provide a plurality of storefronts and the agreement in fact obligates them to have at least a minimum of five separate establishments there so that you don't have just a single large tenant. That's not the intent. The intent is multiple small tenants. And oftentimes we bring you development agreements where we've partnered with larger establishments. This is one where you're really focusing on small business and investing in space that would accommodate small business growth. As I said, the intent is for this to be retail and when I say retail specifically soft goods, merchandise, those kinds of things is the intent. We have given the developer in this agreement the flexibility to do a certain amount of limited food and beverage, but that is very limited because the intent is to accommodate those small boutique retail type establishments in here. This is the architect's rendering of what the garage would look like. There are facade improvements and things and other lighting, electrical upgrades that we have contemplated. What this development will allow us to do is do that in partnership with this developer and you'll see as we get into some of the numbers, there's a portion of that we pay for, but there's also a portion of the developer would actually pay for out there inside at our project in the right of way. This is a little closer view and you can see what the storefronts would look like on the other side of the sidewalk there. One thing you see here and there's another site plan where you'll see, you see the car entering, that is the existing entrance into the garage and that is unaffected by this lease. So this provides you the floor plan. It's approximately 7,500 square feet. It's actually broken into these two parcels, so you'd have three or four establishments there and a couple on this side. This is the office space that our employees use that operate the garage and this is the entrance. That area is unaffected by the lease, so the area in yellow are the only areas that are affected by this lease and that is the footprint that would be leased to them. We're doing a ground lease and they actually build a small, effectively build two small buildings inside of our garage that are not part of the structure there or separate standalone small retail bays that would be built there inside the garage. There was discussion about the impact on parking. So the area in yellow currently contains 15 parking spaces. The total garage has 497 parking spaces, so we are giving up and we're recommending that you declare surplus 15 parking spaces out of the 497. The use rates of this garage are something that Tommy Brown and his staff monitor very, very closely and we oftentimes hear and we heard a little bit tonight, a perception about there being a shortage of parking. And I will tell you that while that perception exists and we certainly want to do things to better market the reality of the parking situation, but the reality is we have significant parking in the downtown area and in fact have more than is currently demanded. This garage, on any given day, you can find about 200 empty spaces in this garage and that's very, very routine. It is really right now over capacity. Now, we recognize that the downtown area is going to continue to grow. There are in fact office buildings that are not at full occupancy and Mr. Brown and his staff have looked very closely at what we expect the demand to be if all those office buildings there within that walk you did as we're fill up. We're very comfortable that these 15 parking spaces we can afford to give them up and you'll see as we go through the numbers, in fact, what we're identifying from just an economic standpoint, this is a higher and better use for those versus the 15 parking So going into elements of the agreement, the commitments from the city of Huntsville, obviously it's lease of the approximately 7,500 square feet for a 40-year period. We will provide that to the developer in as-is condition. There's nothing that we would do to prepare that area and they would come in and be able to proceed with their construction. There are improvements to the garage that are necessary. Some of it is some of just the aesthetic impacts of the outside of the garage. There's some improvements above the sidewalk area that need to occur in terms of lighting. We talked earlier about lighting and in fact I had a conversation earlier today with Dr. Showers about street level lighting and things in the downtown area. And in this sidewalk, because of the way the garage cantilever's over the sidewalk, it's certainly an area that can be prone to getting dark and so part of what we need to do there is to do some light work and things like that. This agreement caps our obligation in terms of that investment at $200,000 and we expect that the total project to be probably in about the $250,000 range. And I say about because there's still some design work that's going on, but what's critical from the city perspective in this agreement is regardless of how expensive that may be and what the ultimate cost may be, our obligation is capped at $200,000. Any amount that goes above the $200,000, the developer will actually pay for those improvements and that's improvements to our building and to our right of way outside of the area that he's leased. So that's part of what his commitment is and you'll see that again here on a subsequent slide. We're also obligated in the agreement to maintain the garage in a functional capacity throughout the life of this lease, the 40 years. That's fully, that's always been our intent. This is a garage that we think will be with us for a number of decades to come. As part of doing our due diligence on contemplating this lease, we actually had an outside engineer come in and do a full structural assessment of the garage, give us an assessment of the kind of work that he thinks will be necessary in coming years to extend the life of the garage. It's all stuff that we would do as a normal course of business and is in no way caused by this agreement or affected by this agreement. It's the kinds of things that we would do anyway. The garage is actually in very, very good condition and we will do some things to shore it up structurally probably in the next 10 years or so, but it's in very good condition and we fully expect it to be part of our downtown parking solution for many years. Some of the protections we have in place, one is that we have approval authority over the design and the type of use in the area that the retail establishments go in and even after construction is complete, if there's any significant changes to the exterior of that private development, we have approval authority over those improvements or changes. The Clinton Row Partners also maintain insurance on our parking garage, so if there's anything about their development or the activity of their tenants that cause damage to the garage, their insurance is in place to cover that damage. And we also, as part of the agreement, have a pretty extensive list of prohibited uses that guide the developer and the types of things that can go into the garage. And again, I want to emphasize that list of prohibited uses is really to keep us focused on keeping this a retail merchandising type establishment so that it accomplishes what we want to, which is, you know, get some of this property back on the tax rolls and collect sales tax out of it in addition to the ground lease fees that you'll see. So the obligation from Clinton Row Partners, first is they will be obligated to pay any taxes as any other private owner would, so there'll be property taxes as well as sales taxes that will be collected out of that and obviously their actual tenants, the operators of the retail establishments would be obligated to pay those sales taxes. Also, there is a lease payment and so the first 10 years of the lease agreement is at $14,000 per year. After the 10th year, it then escalates by 5% per year throughout the life of the lease. Now, for sake of comparison, that those 15 parking spaces, this land that we are leasing, the maximum revenue that we can enjoy off of those 15 spaces right now at the rates at which we lease parking spaces is $10,080. So even if you do not consider the increase in tax revenues that come from this agreement, just the lease agreement itself will generate positive cash flow on the revenues as compared to the parking capacity that you might have there. So in this case, from the very first day, you're earning an extra $3,900 per year just from the ground lease. So then anything that you collect in taxes off the property, which currently is not subject to any taxation, is just further increase to the revenues to the city. And also, as I mentioned before, the city is going to do the facade improvements and other electrical improvements and things to the building. We'll do up to $200,000 of that, anything above that amount, the developer will pay for. The timeline for this development is actually intended to move very, very quickly, so assuming with your approval tonight, we will start. They should have the design complete in the month of March and be able to start construction in April. They expect the construction to be complete in September and be able to begin doing tenant fit out in October, November and have some of the establishments start opening in November. They are actively marketing the property and getting interest from a number of retailers and we expect that to move pretty quickly once the project is started.
Mr. Chairman, I have questions. How was the lease payment derived? How do you know you got the best deal?
So we've compared lease rates to other properties that we see around the downtown area and it's a little bit complex. I mean, it's not an exact science. I mean, it's not an exact science, as we know, and some of the challenge with this property is encumbered by the fact that the garage is there. So, there are some limitations and restrictions around how they might develop it, but in comparing that to other properties that we saw around there, we felt very comfortable that we're at a market rate.
And it was above what you were getting anyway, so you just figured that was a good deal. I think the public's a little bit confused about the legal terms of declaring this surplus. Can you explain that, please?
I can't. You know, so typically, like, you know, just earlier tonight, you declared surplus a bridge that is not currently being used, and that's certainly the more common way to do it. But in this case, what we're looking at is really what are the utilization rates and what is the highest and best use for that piece of property? And while currently there are cars some days that park there, there is pretty significant excess capacity in that garage, and not just from the dollars and cents side, but also just what the capacity of the garage is. We recommend that this is a higher and better use and therefore declare surplus to the needs as a parking garage and use it better in this lease format.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Dr. Robinson?
There was some conversation the other night or concern at Planning Commission about hardship that this would impose on those who use the parking deck for parking, losing those 15 spaces. But you said that there are 497 spaces in that garage.
Correct.
So, by my estimate, that's 3% that we would be losing. So, that really doesn't represent a significant hardship. You still have, as you said, excess capacity in that garage for those folks.
Correct. And the way the garage functions, it already has very limited spaces that are on that first floor for people that are just coming and going on a daily basis. The majority of that first floor is dedicated to handicap spaces, and we will continue to have the same number of handicap spaces on the first floor there, as well as spaces that are actually reserved for people who live in the area that have reserved specific spots, and it's dedicated to them. So, while there's a handful of spaces that might be available for people who just come and go and are fortunate to find an open space there, the overwhelming majority of folks are already going to the upper floors, and that will continue. And there is plenty of capacity in the garage to handle the current daily demand.
I don't think I've ever been able to park on that first floor when I've pulled into that garage. My last question is, do you have an estimate of what the tax revenues potentially could be? Have you run any numbers on that?
I have not done that. You know, we really focused on making sure that we got a ground lease that paid for itself and then saw the additional tax revenues as gravy. I always want to be a little bit cautious in kind of over-promising those kinds of things. You know, we know that it has to be retail, so we know that we'll have to generate tax revenues, but given, kind of, there is a wide variety of the types of merchandise and things that could be sold there, so I have not attempted to do that.
I didn't know if the partners, Clinton Row Partners, had run any numbers.
I did not ask for them to do that.
Any further discussion, council members?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
The 15, and this is kind of piggybacking off of Dr. Robinson, and I guess just to kind of clarify, okay, you've got 15 parking places, okay? You get some revenue off of that, but again, just kind of playing with the numbers that I could see, it looks like that the amount that you're leasing the property out for, you're actually going to be generating a lot more revenue than what the 15 parking spaces would bring in. Is that the numbers that you all have run?
It is. And so, you know, where that $10,080 comes from is our maximum lease rate on a space downtown is $56 per month, times 15 parking places, times 12 months, that's where you get to the $10,000. So, and that's the maximum. That's if somebody actually rents it and has that dedicated space. So, the reality is, if we had a way to track the revenue off of those particular places, the number would be less than that, but I think it's, you know, just to not oversell it, I've shown you what the maximum would be, and then we're still achieving above that by the $3,900.
Okay. It looks like with this plan, you're going to have some good synergy between these small areas going in, new shops going into that area versus the White Store across the street, which I've been to several times, and I mean, it's part retail and it's part museum, and they have a lot of people that come in, especially on weekends, and then the, you know, the small businesses adjacent to it. So, it looks like with minimum, you know, cost, you know, from us, that we're going to generate some revenue and at the same time, kind of bring in something that's going to be a nice, nice little corner in downtown Huntsville that's going to attract people downtown.
We agree, you know, and where the theory comes from in co-locating retail really plays out in the way you see malls function. And if you were to kind of compare this to a mall, the U.G. White store is that large kind of department store, the anchor that you might see in a mall. The shops at Clinton Row, there are those storage units are very analogous, almost like the kiosks that you would see in the middle of the mall, and what this new development contemplates is all those kind of mid-sized stores that fill in between the department stores. And so, while we've seen that model be successful across the decades, you're recreating that here, and we've certainly focused on the establishments that are right there facing onto Clinton, and those are the ones that see that immediate benefit by just facing across each other. But you also have other stores that are within very easy walkie-distance, like Harrison Brothers, like the Green Street Market Store and others around the Courthouse Square that will certainly benefit, and I think also the various food and beverage establishments will also gain from the additional foot traffic.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. Any further discussion, council members?
Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. 15 double D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to a development agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama and Clinton Row Partners LLC for the development of retail spaces within a portion of the first floor of the Clinton Street parking garage.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. 15 double E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to a ground lease between the City of Huntsville, Alabama and Clinton Row Partners LLC for a portion of the first floor space on the Clinton Street parking garage brought by administration.
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. 15 double F is a resolution to appoint Jeff Birdwell as the Director of the Huntsville-Madison County Emergency Management Agency at the salary rate of grade 20, step 12, brought by administration. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion?
Mr. President, let me just say that this position was opened up by the EMA Board. They had numerous applicants for it. I think that you're going to find, if you look at your bio right there with Jeff Birdwell, he's been Assistant Deputy Chief in Madison for the past couple of years. He's got a graduate certificate in emergency management, a master's in public administration. Don't think that it would be untruthful to say that Chief Cobb will probably cry when y'all make this vote and decide to hire him, but I think that he will be a great asset for the whole community, not just Huntsville, but for Huntsville, Madison, and Madison County. And I think we've got a great person here to do a great job for us, and I would urge you to go ahead and approve this.
Any further discussion, council members?
Mayor, I certainly agree with you. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. We're now at Agenda Item Number 16, Legal Department Items Transactions, 16A Vacation of Easements. 16A1 is an ordinance vacating a portion of a utility and drainage easement for property located at McMullen Cove subdivision along the rear lot line of 55 McMullen Lane, brought by CINGAL. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
By Dr. Showers, second by Councilman Kling. Discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. We're now at Agenda Item Number 17, Non-Roster Communications from the Public. If you wish to address the council, position yourself in proximity to the microphone. You'll have a few minutes, approximately three minutes, to address the council. Ms. Reed.
Thank you. I've got two items. One's on the agenda and one's off. Well, they're both on the agenda. I'm sorry about that. Number one of them is that I was told I couldn't come to the Historical Commission meeting in Methormore Acres because I didn't live in the neighborhood. If you give this city, any of these people, any money from this city, you can bet I'm invited to the meeting whether I live in that neighborhood or not. So, you need to straighten your commissions out. I won't sit back and put up with that. You can bet on it. Mr. Kling moved me out of my district, so he moved it into another district. But anyway, I was told I couldn't go, but I'll be at the next one. You can bet on it. Anyway, I'm back to the parking garage. Maybe I need to just jump the fence and take up with all of the yes people sitting up there on that council. It don't matter what comes in here. If the mayor wants it, we got the biggest bunch of council persons, and I've been coming in here for 30 years. You sit up there and you question a few questions, but you're going to vote on it. It don't matter if the people care. It don't matter if the people like it. It don't matter how much it costs. All of you voted for this, and the lawyers don't have anywhere to park. The courthouse people are fussing already. They don't have anywhere to park. Drive downtown on Friday and try to park at the courthouse and go to courthouse. I mean, I don't know what you do, what you do. Of course, election year is coming up this year, and maybe there'll be some changes somewhere. I hope and pray to God that some of these people will wake up, and we keep bringing in people from out of town, and you want to live like a big town? Move to a big city and I'll help you. If you don't move, I'm going to have to jump the fence and take up with you and quit fighting you right here in this place right here. If they don't want change in government, I'm going to jump the fence, wheel up their taxes to pay for the debt that you have got us into. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Many council members wish to address Ms. Reed's comments?
I would.
Mr. Kling?
Whenever Mayor Battle has what I think's a pretty good idea, yes, I'm going to support it, and I appreciate the fact that we do have people up here bringing up good ideas. I know it's easy to say everything stinks, everything's lousy. Seems like the more we try to explain to some citizens about, well, we're losing 3% of the spots, this is what it would cost, and this is what the return would be, and, you know, we're supposed to look for some good ideas, and we don't agree on everything up here, and I guess some people, if they don't hear what they want to hear, they're going to just walk out of a meeting and storm, but unlike some people, I'm not planning on running for any office this year. I'm just looking for good ideas, and frankly, this was a good idea, and it brings people downtown, and it's minimum cost, and actually, we will probably see a dollars and cents expense, I mean, a dollars and cents increase. As far as the neighborhood, the neighborhood did not want outsiders participating in the vote on their neighborhood issue, and they made the decision not to have outside people, not anybody from the city. So, certainly, we respect the right of the neighborhood to make their own determination whether or not they want to go into the National Registry of Historic Places. I may be a kindred, you know, dues-paying member as their council member, but I did not go to that meeting. So, they made up their mind without any outside interference, and they just wanted the residents to talk among themselves. Democracy in action.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. Anyone else wishes to address the council? Is there a motion? Sir, if you'll position yourself to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Ben Payment, just a concerned citizen. I didn't really know the format for how to speak up earlier, but one concern or one question I did have about the parking garage was, you know, leasing it for $14,000 a year. I was wondering what the projected revenue for the leased spaces would be, right? So, potentially, if they're each leased at $1,000 apiece or something, there was five to six pieces of property, it might be $6,000 worth of revenue towards the Clinton Row group or something to that nature. And it seems to me like that's a really cheap lease on something that's going to be turned around leased again, and all of that revenue would go to the Clinton Row properties, but I was hoping there might have been some projection or some thought about how much money that Clinton Row might make and that perhaps this lease was too low.
Okay. I believe that. Mr. Hamblin, would you like to address that again, sir?
Yeah. So, you know, we looked at, as we discussed briefly in the presentation, we looked at comparable prices for ground leases in the downtown area and the rate at which we're leasing that ground without improvements is what we consider to be an appropriate market rate. And as you show, as we show, it actually pulls greater revenues than in its current use. I think it's, your question is a very valid one, but also, their lease rates will be determined by the market. And so, in this case, the developer is doing all of the investment into the vertical improvements, and they'll own those completely, and so they will have to be able to generate occupancy levels at market rates that allow them to get an appropriate return on their investment. Those rates will rise and fall as the market rises and falls, and that's where risk comes in for that developer. And so, in this case, we're very comfortable that we're getting a market rate, and we show an escalator out there that we think is an accurate reflection of typical models for inflation through the 40-year life of the lease. And so, we're very comfortable that what we've gotten there for the ground lease is a market rate. In this case, the developer will bear the risk of rises and falls in the real estate market and the retail market. So, they certainly, as business works in America, will certainly deserve to get an appropriate return on investment to repay them for that risk, but it's very, very challenging right now to say exactly what that will be for them. We certainly hope they're profitable because we don't want it to be dark and empty, but we expect them to be profitable, and we expect them to get, you know, a return on investments driven by the market. And they certainly, as if they're getting an astronomical return on investment, then they'll bring competitors into the market, and that direct return on investment will get driven down. I mean, that's the way the free market operates. So, they will have to bear the risk of the fluctuations in that market.
Thank you, Mr. Hamblin. Yes, or Dr. Showers?
I would like to call Mr. Jordan, Mr. Shane Davis to the microphone. Thank you. Ms. Jordan, Mr. Davis, I received a call yesterday from Dr. Joseph E. Lawrie. He is ready to come. If we would give him a date, Michelle, he did put a caveat on to the date, tried to make it a warm weather date, and that's all he needs, and he's ready to come. And I just want to commend Ms. Jordan and Mr. Davis for the entire effort in that project. It'll be the new Joseph Lawrie coming off Governor's Drive, going back around to Williams Street at the end. They have done a marvelous job, and I want to congratulate them for that effort in that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Showers, and we're ready when I'll get with you, and we'll select a date.
Okay. Got to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Any further discussion? Motion has been made, second by Mr. Dr. Showers. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose?